I will read our pandemic message. Good evening, we greatly appreciate our staff, council, and residents adapting to our teleconference format due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota State Statute 13D dot zero two one. That permits a public body to hold a meeting via telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of public record. After each agenda item is read and staff gives a report on the agenda item, we'll call upon each council member individual that have questions on that particular item. I don't think we have any motions tonight, but if we do, and you want to make a motion or second emotion, please state your name first. All votes on all items will be completed by a roll call to meet those standards for State Statute thirteen D dot zero two one. Alright, so number one on the agenda tonight is WOLD Architects Needs Assessment. Mr. Lewin, what are you going to start us out on that tonight?
Mayor, I will, I will start out. We're, we're going to be welcoming Jonathan Lewis and Melissa Stein tonight from WOLD Architects. They are going to provide the council with a presentation tonight and update what WOLD has been working and our core planning group of staff has been going through as far as our facility needs assessment. Just a couple of things for the council tonight as we're going through this, just to be mindful of what, what is being presented in regards to, they'll go through some of the deferred maintenance items within the facilities and how that, how that impacts the cities and some of that financial data, as well as some of the other options that could be presented to the council for that. I think at the end of the, end of day, staff is going to be looking for direction from the council in regards to some of these facility needs and how that relates to the city and how we're going to plan for those and largely how that will relate into our long-term plan. And if that is, we talked before, we had a version of that long-term plan that went through some of our streets and needs and that if the facilities, if some of the options can be added to that long-term plan, that way we can try to look at some of those needs and what those financial impacts and implications may be for the city for long-term budgeting. So with that, that's all I really have. We can turn it over to WOLD and we'll probably have, we'll do this and we might have some interjection from staff as we go through the presentation.
Wonderful, uh, thank you, Rob, appreciate it. Can you?
You should be able to.
Thank you, I got it, no, yep, we're good. Um, so hopefully all of you can see the screen. I think most of you maybe remember meeting with Jonathan in November before, I think it was right after the elections. I was unfortunate not able to be there, but I'm Melissa Stein, like Rob said, from the, from WOLD and here with Jonathan and we're going to just go through kind of our, I would say our report at the moment, our preliminary report and really we would love to get your guys' feedback in it. So we, we do have a presentation, but feel free to interject if you have questions as we go through the process.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to welcome Brett to new, uh, new council member. So thanks for joining us and again, we, uh, I'm sure you've been hearing from Rob what we've been up to. I think you've been getting up to speed and gotten some of the documentation, but hopefully yourself and the rest of the council members will get a good glimpse into the, the work that the core planning group and ourselves have been doing.
Um, so today we really want to go through a few things, going through the guiding principles. While we start off with those, I think you guys have seen those a few times. Again, it's kind of what we base everything off of, so it's really important just to reiterate those as we go through them. Deferred maintenance, um, we'll go through kind of the priorities and the cost, um, facility, yeah, functional deficiencies, excuse me, um, options review, and then kind of have some of those preliminary financial discussions as we get to that, to the end. Um, and then really, we want, we want this to be kind of a dialogue. We do want to, you know, explain to you guys and present what's happening, but we really wanted to get your input. That's why we're here today. We want to make sure that as we move forward, we're in alignment with the city council. So Jonathan? You're muted.
Thank you. Rob touched on it before, um, is that there, there's really two big outcomes for us today. The first is feedback, um, whether that be options or anything else that we've done thus far that, um, the council really feels like we need to look deeper into or especially some of the options as we look through those, um, maybe there's some feedback from the council on, um, specific buildings that, um, we're looking at. And then the second one is just that, um, uh, financial piece and long-term planning and, um, whether or not, um, some of these options and the work that we're looking at could dovetail into that long-term plan that, um, you guys have been working on. So those are the two, I think, main things that we want to come away from this meeting with.
Alright, um, so again, I won't read all of these verbatim because you have seen them a few times, but again, our guiding principles, um, they are very important that they're up here. So the three main things that we focused on in this, in this, um, master planning as we went through was focusing on the function and operations of all of the facilities and the departments, um, for the city, looking at sustainability, um, making sure that that's part of our, you know, common sense goals and, and that, you know, we're not just going blind, but that was taken into consideration. And then really being fiscally responsible, um, we know that there's options, we know that there's needs, and so we want to really help the city get there. And so we know that being fiscally responsible is one of, one of the big things here as well. So as you guys know, when we, um, started this master planning, we kind of go down two different avenues. One of them is a condition assessment where we, um, kind of do a facility analysis of your existing infrastructure. The second one is we go through, um, meet with the different departments, talk about programming, talk about their future needs, talk about their deficiencies today. So the first piece of that that I'm going to talk about is the condition assessment. Again, you've seen these, so I'm just going to kind of pick, um, pick on some big ones here. Obviously at the City Hall, ADA complacency is a, is a big piece. Um, the, the roof is in fairly poor condition and there is some leakage on the interior of the building. The RTUs, um, which are the mechanical systems are past its life expectancy. There's poor ventilation, um, and temperature controls throughout the building. And then from a, an electrical standpoint, really the service is again past its, its useful life expectancy. When we look at the, the fire station, again, the, the toilets and kind of the locker room spaces are not ADA compliant. The roof, it's connected to the City Hall, so it's in the same condition as the City Hall's roof. When we look at the apparatus bay and the different additions and how the building was put together, the ventilation, one, it's different for each side of the building, uh, but also it's not adequate for the type of vehicles that are being stored there and for the people utilizing the, the building itself. Uh, and then again, the, the power piece of it, um, it's, it's not to the, it, we would, we would recommend upgrading it, um, based on just how everything is tied together with the City Hall. Uh, Public Works, um, that facility, again, the toilets were, um, non-compliant. Some of the interior of the building with the trailer for some of the staff use is, is not ADA compliant. There has been pest issues, the building's not sprinkled. Most of this space has kind of indirect outside air, so the ventilation is very poor quality there. And then from a, your electrical standpoint, the generator situation isn't ideal the way that it's set up at the moment. Um, and the panels are kind of again at their life expectancy as well. And then at police, again, ADA has been a, a constant thing throughout the, the city. Um, again, the building that they're currently in has no means of security from a ballistic standpoint or even a fortified exterior building standpoint. Um, the garages don't have any ventilation at all for the people utilizing them or the vehicles that are in there. And then the public work floor drain is connected because the building's connected, the, the drainage system is connected and it's not, um, in great quality. And then, um, the fire alarm, sorry, the, the fire alarm system would want to ideally be, um, upgraded. And then the electrical system, again, it's kind of overloaded, it's past its capacity and it would need to be recommended to be replaced as well. So that was just a quick overview of as we walked through the buildings, um, what some of the needs were that we saw. Obviously the lot list is a lot larger, it's a lot more comprehensive. We went through those and, um, we just, we, as a, as a group, as a core planning group, we started, um, indicating what would be a priority. And, and those priorities were really based off of, um, we have a priority one through four. Priority one would really be those short-term immediate needs. Usually those are life, safety, um, you know, health issues, those major accessibility issues where we might see that there potentially could be some, um, liability issues to those. Um, and those are anything that we would feel want to be replaced between the zero and two years. A priority two, um, it's some of those ADA accessibility pieces that, you know, we should do to meet code, but they maybe don't have some liabilities or they're not as permanent, hazardous materials would be part of that energy issues when we look at some sustainability stuff. Those kind of go into those priority twos, which is kind of when we look at it a, a two to five year standpoint. Um, a priority three is anything, um, six to 10 years out, so it's a longer term duration. We see those as being more, um, you know, um, health pieces that aren't specifically due to like asbestos or anything like that, but maybe would get flagged if you were doing a renovation or a, a project of some sort. Again, it, um, energy issues, things that aren't immediate needs, they're not really going to affect, um, the people in it today or their health, but it might affect the long-term benefits or, um, reimbursements that the city might be seeing, um, from some of the, the items that they have. And then a priority four, it says anything within 10 years, but it really is those, when we look at our facility, um, analysis that we do, we look at what are damaged today, but then we also take into account, you know, in those five years and that seven years, you know, the carpet might have to get replaced or the casework gets damaged because people are utilizing it, it's just not, you know, maybe built correctly or something along those lines. And so we take a look at those, that's kind of what that priority four is, it's those items that when we look at accessibility, um, some of the new codes that got increased, some buildings get, um, grandfathered in. A priority four from an accessibility standpoint piece would be redoing bathrooms fully to accommodate some of these new now, new code issues that your building was grandfathered into. Or like I said, like carpet painting, some of the casework stuff, the aesthetic items. So we looked at the buildings, we sat down as a group, looked at our, our long extensive list. We went through our priorities and we started indicating each item and what a priority should be for each building. And with that, that's where we get to this, this chart. Um, and as you can see, it's separated by priorities on the left-hand side and the buildings up at the top. And then at the bottom, it is a subtotal of the building. If you did, if you chose to do everything, let's say on the City Hall, day one, no matter what priority it is, it'd be about a $1.4 million project. If you decided to do everything in the, in the buildings, all City Hall buildings, um, all together, you know, not spacing it out, it would be a total of 4.9. The reason why we're showing this to you guys is, is we know that the buildings have, when we look at deficiencies and we look at the infrastructure, no matter what happens, you know, day one of a building being built, you are going to have continuous maintenance, you're going to have operational things that need to get taken into consideration. And so there's always a cost to doing nothing. Um, and so I just want to upfront here, as, as you see, this is just the cost of doing nothing, if you will. Now, you might be asking what maybe some of these priority one, two, threes for each building, um, consist of? So when we look at the different buildings, um, we did then separate each one into kind of different categories. So we look at site, we look exterior interiors, accessibility. So this doesn't take into account the priorities at all, but it does take into account all the different categories that we look at. So this just kind of separates it for each, each building, if you will. So for City Hall, you can see how it's separated here. The next one would be the, the fire station. Again, we look at the same, same categories for each one. We go to Public Works. And then the police station. So I'm going to pause here for just one second to see if anybody had questions regarding the facility analysis before we kind of move on to what we call as our functional assessment.
Great, council, if you have any questions, just make sure you state your name first, please. Doesn't look like anybody does, so that's a good presentation, Melissa. So, alright, we'll continue.
Sounds great, yeah. So like I said, we go down two different avenues when we, when we look at the master planning. This next piece is really the functional assessment. It's where we sit down with the departments, we talk through what their current deficiencies are, what their future growth from a staffing perspective and an operational standpoint is going to be. Um, and we take all that into consideration. So this first piece is going briefly, again, you've seen these, so I'm not going to go through every one. But for each, each building, again, each department, we talked through, um, some of their, their needs. And so for City Hall, it's really a lack of separation between the public and the private. Um, and they have an issue kind of with just the growth, they don't really have room to grow currently here. And then one of the big pieces, obviously the, the reception lobby, um, it's more of a hallway, kind of a corridor as you get into the council chambers, um, and not necessarily a welcoming, as welcoming as it, it could be. The police department, um, it's not really located in, in a right location from a response time. It was a temporary facility when it was first, um, being, you know, occupied by the police. Um, and so obviously that has some functional issues, um, that we already, or sorry, uh, infrastructure issues that we've already talked about, but also it doesn't accommodate for the needs today or industry standards of what we would see from a police station. Uh, the fire station, again, um, the way with health and safety and, and how the, um, you know, health and safety for firefighters is, is trending right now. It doesn't necessarily meet those standards the way it's set up today. And then it has kind of not really great support system, so it has great apparatus space, but not necessarily the office space and the support space for the off, or sorry, for the firefighters. Um, and it won't really accommodate any future needs for any, you know, vehicles as those grow and as those change in the future. And then when we look at Public Works, the, the big one, we looked at it as in the infrastructure piece, the facility analysis piece, but it still comes in here is that it's not ADA compliant, um, and it really lacks, you know, space for future growth and for growth of that department. They don't have, you know, efficient spaces to do the plan reviews that they need to do, um, or to collaborate as, as a department as a whole. Um, and then as the city grows, there's obviously going to be investments in new vehicles and equipment and currently there is no space really for that to, to be, be placed anywhere in a manner that is appropriate, excuse me. So one of the other things that we looked at, um, once we met with all the departments, we kind of look at what's existing today from a, a, um, excuse me, existing utilization, so a square foot number. And then we also look at future growth, that's how we get what we're going to call as our projected need. How we got our projected need was really understanding and creating space standards. So these space standards go into different office sizes, workstation set spaces. So when we start looking at added growth from a staff standpoint, we know what square footage to be able to allocate, allocate to either, um, the existing facility in addition or renovation, what, what it might be. Um, so that's what these are today. The thought here is if you build new, this is what you would be building to, you're definitely not going to renovate an existing office just to make the, you know, if it's 10 square feet less or something like that. So it's really just, um, as we build new into the city, these would be adopted into those, um, spaces. And then the space needs projection, so this is a very summarized version of the long, again, list of every room, every staffing person that we looked at as a, a core planning group. But as you can see from City Hall, Fire, Police, and Public Works, existing utilization, so City Hall currently is 40, roughly 4,300 square feet. Projected need would be 7,700 square feet. Fire Department currently is 57. Projected need would be 8,100 square feet. Again, these are when we look at our 20 years out, that 2040 projections, these take into consideration model changes or operational changes. From the police standpoint, currently they're in roughly 2,400 square feet building. Projected need is about 18,000, 18,000, excuse me, square feet. Public Works, 15,000 today, um, projected need into the 28,000. Again, that does take into consideration their cold storage, um, facilities that they have as well. So again, before I jump into, or before we jump into kind of our, our options or our description, or descriptions of our options, I'll stop right now in case there's any questions.
Melissa, I have a couple of questions. So when we're looking at square footage, so police 2,000, right now currently 2,500 square feet, um, it's quite a lot more space at 18,3. What sort of things are we seeing that needs to go in there? And I know one of them is, um, uh, when we have an investigation and we have to seize property or whatever and has to go into that sort of thing. What other things are kind of typical? That is a almost 10 times, not quite nine times the amount of space needed. So, um, is that also including the car bays and that sort of thing? So maybe you could summarize that. And then the question is going to be the same for the fire department, which isn't that much more. But I know we're expecting to purchase a larger fire truck and then you can maybe even touch on fireworks, so fire, public works, sorry, so.
Yeah, so I guess I can answer those, but maybe, I don't know, if Paul, um, you would want to maybe talk on the, the police piece?
Well, maybe, um, we can summarize some of the big ones probably, and then Paul, if you want to chime in, or anybody else can too. Some of it is listed out, just in kind of summary version of that functional assessment, but, um, vehicle storage for police is definitely a big one. And so it's not, um, you know, finished out space that's as expensive, but it's definitely space that's needed to protect, um, the investment of those vehicles. You know, you can go buy, um, a Ford Explorer for, I don't know what these are, what they are these days, 40, 50 grand, but, um, the ones that police drive around in are, you know, probably two to three times that cost with all the technology in there. And the fact that those vehicles have to be available all the time to respond, um, there's a lot of data that supports storing those inside. So that's a big chunk of that square footage. Another one that you already touched on was that evidence storage. So that could be large evidence if it's a, you know, vehicle that, um, has to be, uh, maintained, um, and, um, kept in a secure location. It could be, you know, smaller evidence, but, you know, there's certain statute of limitations on storing that. So you do have to have space to accommodate that. And then some of the just other support spaces that are lacking, um, that they're doing, you know, in different locations, whether that's meetings or, um, investigations and, um, having a private spot to do, you know, some of the detective work that's needed. Uh, there's a lot of, um, individual spaces that probably get mixed together right now in that 2,500 square foot space, um, that from a security standpoint and kind of safety and good best practices, um, sort of means that we really should be separating those and have those spaces be, um, separate, individual rooms. So Paul, I don't know, or Melissa, is there's any other ones you want to touch on? Otherwise I can keep going on the other items.
Yeah, you know, certainly, um, you know, a building isn't just to, you know, protect our assets or give, you know, an employee someplace to, you know, work that day. It also has to perform, uh, specific functions of our responsibilities. And they touched, you know, briefly on the evidence room and where we currently sit with that, we're essentially bursting at the seams with that and already have to start figuring out, even in the meantime, how we're going to store all the evidence that we do have and what's that look like? External containers that we're going to have to start renting because we're purely beyond capacity there. Uh, when we talk about, you know, just, we have no storage room at all just to store our supplies, you know, when we talk of, you know, PPE that we just ordered, I think if you went to City Hall, you can see it piled in the, in the, um, council chambers. And keeping a lot of that storage below that six-foot level, so it's not, you know, a hazard from, you know, a safety committee perspective. But even in the evidence room, you know, we have evidence processing needs where we have to be able to actually process our evidence in sanitary conditions so that we don't contaminate, um, the evidence when we do bring it in. We've been fortunate that we haven't had any callouts on that, um, you know, relative to how we're processing fingerprints, how we're processing our DNA, you know, how we're, uh, processing, you know, blood contamination. Um, and so we currently don't even have the facility and rooms to do that and certainly don't have the equipment to do it to current industry standards. We talk about, you know, break rooms. You know, right now our employees get dressed and undressed in the squad garage bay as squads pull in and out, that's their locker room. You know, uh, completely not appropriate, you know, but it's certainly all we have. We don't have a segregation of restrooms. We have a one restroom, unisex restroom and, you know, we shouldn't, certainly as our, our, our demographics in the police department are changing, uh, and we're seeing a mix of male and female employees, uh, we certainly should have some segregation and privacy there relative to even restroom use, locker rooms. Uh, we have, you know, a, a refrigerator and a microwave that's also in the police garage that sits on the shelf next to, you know, uh, our supplies, whether it be our ammunition, our, you know, our range supplies, you know, and we deal with lead contamination and everything else that comes along with that. So, oh, you know, when we're, what we're really talking about is more than just purely, you know, we need four or five office space, we have to be able to create space that separates our operational functions and prevents any cross-contamination from a health perspective, but also from an evidence collection prosecution, uh, perspective as well. Conference rooms, meeting rooms, we certainly don't have that. Uh, there is no level of confidentiality and privacy at the police department, uh, just because of the close proximity and lack of separation or even, uh, wall and, and, uh, soundproofing design that we can even deal with human resource issues out there without it being, you know, spread throughout the organization because the walls are so paper thin that, you know, we have to ask people to leave the building so we can have, um, confidential conversations. So from a functionality piece of it, um, you know, we really have to look at, you know, what is the, the expectations and the standards of professional policing nowadays and those requirements and have the necessary facilities to, um, to accomplish those. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I did, I, I appreciate that, um, to have that knowledge. So, um, my other one was Public Works and I think we touched on that because the equipment is bigger, correct? So that's why we're, we're trying to expand that because of equipment.
Yeah, so larger equipment and also, um, the, uh, anticipated growth in the department, new vehicles that are planning to be purchased, um, so making sure that you have the space for that. And then, um, just support areas as well. So whether that be, um, washing or, um, staff support such as locker rooms to change and things like that, you know, there's just a lack of those smaller spaces, but, um, the bulk of this is like the actual vehicle storage, which takes up, um, quite a bit of room. And so I, I think the same would be true for fire department too. You know, needing another larger, um, apparatus bay for a new vehicle is a big impact, uh, but then also just the firefighter, firefighter, firefighter safety that, um, is lacking right now. And so the ability to, um, wash or turn out gear and get out of areas that have potential carcinogens in them, there's just not a good method for those firefighters to, um, keep themselves clean and not bring, um, some of those contaminated materials in and throughout, um, the department right now. And so that plays out in a number of different things, not just normal amenities like a locker room, but, um, spaces to, um, hang and wash and, you know, manage all of that gear, um, really is lacking right now. It's all kind of happening in the apparatus bay and, um, in the interstitial space right there. And so that's kind of the, just the process that you need to take from office to apparatus and out to fight a fire. That also means you have to come back in that way too and make sure you're managing that. And in order to do that, you need the spaces to accommodate that.
And, and if I could just add in there as well, Jonathan, you know, with some of the OSHA requirements, um, you know, there has to be a separation. You can't co-mingle, um, an employee locker room shower with a decontamination shower. They have to be separate facilities by OSHA standards and we simply just, we don't meet them. You know, so even from that perspective, um, you know, I, I, I just see a potential for problems, you know, in the short term and long term as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council member that has questions? If you do, please state your name. I'm seeing nobody. Wow, you guys are doing a great job, so on to the next.
Alright, so since we kind of gave you guys all the data, if you will, of what we've collected thus far, um, we wanted to kind of jump into what we're, what we have as options. So as a core planning group, we, we've taken all that information, we've digested it and started looking at what, what might be the best scenario for the city. And we have gone through a couple of different options and so that's what we want to put together for you, or that's what we put together for, um, you guys to review today to get your input on.
And so I think, um, one thing we also want to do is offer, uh, a whole And so I think um one thing we also want to do is offer uh a whole spectrum of um options and so. I think we talked about earlier, there's sort of this concept of doing nothing and just, you know, using what you have and trying to survive with what you have. And what that means is that um you know, you're left with that roughly five million dollar cost potentially over the next ten. Plus years to do nothing, but also um you know, you're also left with just the, all the deficiencies that are still in place in terms of. Um you know, function and operations, safety, security, all of those things, so. You know, public safety just isn't set up to grow um beyond even what it is today. Um City Hall continues to have um those security issues and ADA things that um are still sticking around. And then Public Works just being in two different sites and um not having space to accommodate vehicles means that. You know, this do nothing option, you know, there's a cost to that. Um but there's the potential of not being able to address some of the needs that, you know, they're they're painful now. Um but they'll probably only continue to exacerbate as um the city grows and the departments change as well. So the this is one that we at least wanted to recognize is something that could be done. Um but not the direction that um we talked about as a core planning group. Um so the next one was um kind of the other end of the spectrum is replace all the existing buildings with new. Um so if um you know, if if money were no object, you know, it would be easy to say, let's just replace everything and and start fresh. And I think um as we talk and look through our guiding principles, you know, just that fiscally responsible piece of this is that. Um you do have buildings that have value, you have assets that um we should probably try to utilize and so. We can definitely use those, um but there's a lack of good space um within the city to even construct all of these new buildings as well and so. It means that from a um staging standpoint, you know, you're having to demolish all of your existing buildings. Find temporary locations for everybody and kind of start over and. That sort of big lump sum cost all at once and the disruption to services. Um really didn't also seem to make sense to go um this avenue either. So then we kind of took a more, I guess, pragmatic approach to the next couple of options that. Um we wanted to really explore in more detail with um our core planning group and hopefully get some feedback. Today from the council as well is um reuse the city hall um facility for public safety. So knowing that the fire department is in place um there now, one thing that we could do is take city hall out of there. And then add police into that building. And so you'd renovate the existing city hall and fire facility, you'd have to do some additions to try to accommodate. Um the needs for space that we talked about. Um it wouldn't actually accomplish all of those space needs that we indicated and. Uh Melissa can go into that a little bit when we talk about um just the site um that we're limited to. Um and then for city hall, it means, you know, likely purchasing a new site and building a new city hall or. Um you know, if there were an existing facility that could be purchased to renovate for that. Um there that would be an option, but right now there, um as far as I know, there's no facilities within the city that. Um are located or have the size or um the selling price that would really work for city hall to move in, so. Um you know, it it's an option, but what it means is that there might be a new city hall if um we wanted to go this route and then. Um public works, um I think in either scenario here, whether it's option C and D, which we'll get into. Um we really look to saying, we should centralize public works and rebuild those facilities and. Um the cadence here is that as police moves out of public works. Um they can then start to expand and um adjust their site without affecting public safety operations. Um and the same goes for city hall, um if city hall were to be built new. Um those staff then move out and there's space available to do renovation. Before police come and move into their new space and so there's definitely some phasing approach here that. Um not only makes sense from a practical standpoint, um but would kind of make sense from a um uh financial standpoint. Uh but I think just the the limited space and the um outcome of. Still not being able to accommodate growth for all these departments um really meant that. Um this option was kind of a close second to what we'll talk about next, but I'll have Melissa show. Uh just what that looks like on the existing site too, because that was, I think, one of the biggest um hangups here.
Yeah, one of the other things I'd like to mention too that if police goes onto the existing city hall site with fire. The site itself is not large enough for the impound lot to go with it. And so that means a portion of police functions is now divided between two two different sites. So from an operation standpoint, it's not the most efficient stand um layout. So this is kind of a a general diagram of where we could put additions um and the renovation, so. This this square here is the existing fire, we would renovate that for fire. Um that's in red and then put an addition on there for their their growth needs. Um police, we would renovate city hall for those there in blue and then put a fairly large addition wrapping that whole whole piece there. Um as we look at the site, it is fairly tight when we look at setbacks and property lines. And that's what's actually forcing the building to be at a certain size is due to the site itself and just the. The amount of building that you can actually expand on that site. Um and then actually, as we look at police and fire, there is a a public parking piece to it, but there's also a secure parking piece. To to it as well, and so the kind of the six thousand square feet parking. We would have to look at adding some additional secure parking on there as well from a a police standpoint. And then when we look at um the public works again, this is just a very general, if we if we keep this existing site that police and public works are on right now. We believe it's a great site for public works. Um we would renovate the the existing, or we would, sorry, build a new public works facility. We would expand the cold storage here, um but like I said before, the the impound lot does remain on this site, which does. Um cut down some of the efficiencies from an operation standpoint. Option D.
Yeah, um I guess one thing I want to mention about the diagrams too is that um. You know, we're not planning out every single space right now, but what we're looking at is using the square footage. Um that we've developed throughout this programming exercise with the different departments in the core planning group and saying. You know, the initial sort of um gut check on these is. How does a addition or how does this overall space fit on this site? Will it actually function or not? And so it's. It's not intended to be a um design solution by any means, it's more of just an exercise to show. Whether or not this would actually work on a particular site and so I just, I want to make sure the council understands that because. Um if there were to potentially to be um facility changes in the future. Um there certainly would be a much more extensive design process on site development and building to to show what that would actually look like. Um but generally speaking, this is the square footage that um we would tend to see. Um so then for option D, um this was building a new public safety facility, so new police and fire. Um that are housed in the same spot and renovate city hall. So um creating a new public safety facility means that um you're building that on a greenfield site. Um and it also means that when you do that, um police move out of public works. The fire department moves out of the existing city hall and it's leaves those facilities in place for. Potential future um renovations and work. And so what that means is that um the city hall would have available space to renovate sort of as needed. Oh over the course of time. Um and there would likely be additional square footage there that um isn't even allocated currently in our program. And so it would be whether that's additional space for um public works or some other department that. Um we haven't even projected yet, um there would be some additional space there. Um so it meets and exceeds that sort of twenty forty growth need. Um and then public works um similarly would have uh much of the same um pieces that you saw before. Um but we would be able to have a lot better traffic flow around the building. Um without having the impound lot there and so what all of this means is that. You really have a public safety facility that can function really exactly the way that it needs to today. And out in the future and it leaves city hall and public works with the ability to also do that over the course of time.
Yeah, and before I go into the the diagrams, I also want to iterate that. We we look out to a twenty forty just so we can start getting projections, but obviously we know that there's there's growth that will happen after that. And this option actually with the flexibility, when I get into the slides, you'll see it. Provides the flexibility at each each of these sites for whatever the city, you know, um. Final build out might be someday and how these buildings might have to grow um to meet that need. Um so there's flexibility and adaptability for the future, even past that twenty forty standpoint that we're talking about. So the public, uh sorry, not public works, yeah, public safety facility, excuse me. Um this is the site that I know there's been some interest on. Um so we just kind of placed it here again per what Jonathan said, um it's. Uh just square footages, um we would anticipate a a single building both for fire and police, we believe that there could be some shared. Um some shared operations with that, again. We didn't allocate that here, we'll, we can get into that if if a further design is, you know, in in place. Um so right now it's just the full kind of two buildings. Um there is, you know, the separation from the secure parking and the public parking. Um it's not shown on here, but the site, this um teal color is kind of the property line, so there's, it's large enough for. The buildings both to expand, um and also for the the impound lot to be located on this site as well.
Yeah, and I um maybe what you two is, um Linda, sorry, w- one second, I I want Rob to explain maybe. Um just the location of the site for for folks that don't know where this actually is.
I need to unmute myself. This is the site that's located off on the south portion of two hundred and seventy third street, so this is. Across from the city and county owned property are known as the Bingham property, this was a a tax forfeit parcel at the city. Um purchased along with where the existing water tower is back in two thousand and fifteen, I believe.
Thank you, Rob.
Uh would the sign still uh be there? Further down the road.
That's a, that's a great question, I think if um you know, if that's a priority for the city, we can certainly look at how that would develop on the site. Um not something that we're really that far into the details on on something like that yet, but certainly something that we could consider.
But it is where the like uh. I don't have a cursor here. But where was that? Two seventy third meet, there's the sign is already there.
So do you mean? Oh, you mean the signage for split rocks, council member? Okay, yeah, there is an existing signage on there right now, right? That would, that would have to be a discussion with the. With the owners, we we do have the property, so we would have the property rights on that signage, so that would, that would probably. If this were at some point in time, uh an option, that would be a necessary discussion, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Great, and then as we look at the city hall, again, we would. Um kind of renovate the existing city hall portion, but then actually extend that renovation into what is currently the fire department. Um like Jonathan said, the square footage of the building as a whole exceeds what the twenty forty need is for city hall, so it provides. Some additional um space for, like we said, public works. Or uh you know, department that maybe we haven't even thought about yet, but it really gives that future growth to this to this building and as you can see. It it fits very nicely on the site that it's currently there. And then public works, again, we would, we would keep it on the site that it is at. Um again, just kind of showing in the bubbles that we would build a building here, cold storage, like Jonathan said, it provides additional. Um movement around the site, not having this impound lot here. But what it also does is gives the flexibility for either of these buildings to expand to whatever the need might be for a public work standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, as you talk about um increased vehicle size and circulation within the building, the same is true for circulation around the building and so. Making sure you have um adequate site space, returning radius with larger vehicles is. Um quite important when it comes to planning a public works facility.
A question, would you still be keeping the park?
Um it, as shown right now, um we could probably work around that depending on how we plan the site out, but. Um again, I'll, like I said, these are kind of rough diagrams just to show what the overall square footage is and whether or not it fits on there, so. Again, that's a priority that could certainly be discussed along the way, but um we don't anticipate having to gobble up. You know, all of it, uh but it's something that we would have to plan for.
And and I think another piece for council to know that actually is not, it it's always obviously. Acted as a park, but it is not a dedicated park land, but it's essentially just been, always been a side piece to the. The township or the former township facilities now are public works uh in police facilities, so. Um not to say that the existing ball field or the area would ever have to be utilized, but just a side note.
Yep, thanks, Rob.
So one of the things we wanted to discuss with all of you today is, we've shown you options. Um we know it's not a do everything at one time, so as a group, we've kind of taken a look at. You know, what do we want to accomplish and how do we want to accomplish it? And so as we take a look at at the needs, knowing what those needs are for the city. Um this is kind of when we start um taking a look at that short, mid, long term solutions. Um and really start kind of understanding what the the needs are and categorizing them that way as well. And so um. From our group standpoint, we indicate that the the, you know, ADA requirements at the city halls is a fairly um immediate need. That needs to be um taken care of, we know that the the fire is going to get a truck and that's a fairly large investment. Um and you know, asset for the city that we need to make sure that we preserve. Um and right now we don't have a facility to do that. Um we know that just from an industry standard and from the things that Paul had shared with us today. That our public safety facility or our police facility um is not really in an adequate shape to to meet those standards and so we would consider that being a. You know, really a short term need as well. And then as we look into that that midterm, we're really looking into the public works facility, it functions today. Um it it does have issues um that would need to be rectified, that's why it's not in a long term. Um so ideally that would be in our mid, you know, short to midterm solution. Um the city hall upgrades, when we, when we look at their needs compared to the rest of them, they do have some, but really it's those ADA pieces. Um and more of the public facing spaces that need to be implemented sooner than that than the staff. Pieces and then when we look at the city as a whole and look at all the departments, um you know, a fire department building and or an addition. Um really becomes some of our long term solution. And really that comes into there is just the the ma- model, when we look at the model and we look at how the city's going to progress. There potentially are some, there could be some changing in how that might function in the future and we just want to make sure that that's adequately represented here. So before we kind of go into our our next steps. Um and and talk through some of the fin- then financial discussion, um I want to stop again, pause here, see if there's any other questions. From anybody um here tonight.
Answered, I have a question. Uh this would be directed kind of at Paul. I'm wondering where uh the ideal spot would be, not looking at any particular plots of lands. But ideally, where would be the best place to have fire, where would be the best place to have? Uh public safety, police and would those two uh? Choices be at the same location? If you could put it anywhere in the city, where would it be? And why?
So when we look at the functionality and and our call for service types, where our greatest um liability of risk to the community safety is. Uh when we look at our, you know, which areas of the city produce the the highest level of crime issues, where we want the most. Uh representation or presence and where we want our quickest response time. Um for both police and fire, it's certainly in the downtown area or as close to our industrial commercial park as possible. Um you know, certainly the cost of those buildings exponentially exceeds residential property. But more importantly, just the the components, uh chemicals, uh risk for fire, risk for explosives. You know, ex- explosive response in in conjunction with fire. Um are certainly at a much higher risk in our industrial park than in the residential area, so. So our response time, you know, we would want much quicker from a fire response perspective. From the police presence, you know, our commercial area sees far more crime than our residential area. It's also where our community has its greatest assets, you know, with our businesses and the products that they provide as well. So we want our greatest presence and our quickest response time in town as well. When it comes to those medical emergencies, you know, they can happen anyplace in the city relative to the EMS component of it, but the probability of having an issue that's going to be affecting more than one individual, again, lies in that, that, that commercial industrial area or the I-35 corridor, you know, but also putting it in our downtown area gives us quicker access to the west side of the city, which where we're currently at certainly does not provide, you know, any quick access to the west side of the city. So that downtown, close to that East Viking, 61 corridor corner is actually, you know, ideal or within proximity of that because from that, we can get to the west side, we can get south, we can get, you know, east. So we kind of get the east-west, north-south corridor, you know, any place within a couple blocks of that downtown intersection.
Thank you.
I do want to just stop for a second because we are recording, not stop the recording, but just as we have people watch this and especially our residents, I think what's really important to know is, again, I state this, that this is not something we're doing today, tomorrow, next week, or two months from now. This planning is something that council has put in place, whether it's for facilities or roads or utilities. And this is strictly just that first step to get the information. So what I don't want is information to get out there saying, you know, the city is now just going to go and build all these facilities and that kind of thing. So I really want to stress to anybody who is watching this or residents that are watching this, this is a part of council's overall plan to make sure that we're, we're not kicking the can down the road. We've been holding the bag on this for a really long time. This council has had to make tough decisions because previous councils did not. And so this is all a part of the plan to make sure that we can budget for what we need and that it's also best for the city down the road because we are a growing city. And so I just wanted to stop for a second to make sure that, that we had that statement in there and we're not looking to spend $5 million this year on facilities or $25 million, whatever the case may be, right? We're not, we're not doing that. We're trying to gather all the information and make the decisions that are best for our city and for our residents. So with that, Melissa, you can go on from there.
Yes, thank you. I think that's such a great point to indicate that this is all part of a planning process. And really, we're not even going to be talking about any numbers besides the facility ones that you guys already seen, so you are absolutely correct. So with that, I will go into kind of our next steps, and I'm actually going to hand it over to Rob.
If I, I think I muted myself and unmuted myself there. Council, I think at this point, as we kind of talked about, to be thinking through this approach and looking at these facilities, that, that obviously you got to look here as Wold presented and gave you some, some background on some of the needs and the current condition of the facilities, but looking at more of that financial impact would be the other component of this, which is obviously necessary information the council's going to need and staff is going to need to make recommendations in regards to this process and so the council can make informed decisions. So we would, one thing that we would ask is to ask council that we have this included in our long-term plan, and it's kind of a separate item on this where we can run some of those models, no matter what. And as we keep having those discussions on what different options we really want to look at and what some of those costs would be and how that would impact our budget, our levy and our residences and our businesses in the city. So that would be my ask tonight, if the council would be interested in adding this to our long-term plan and obviously bringing you back some of that financial information so you can, we can continue through the process and try to make informed decisions on how we want to continue with our plans for facilities.
All right, so what I'd like to do then is I'm going to actually go around the room, ask each council member directly what Mr. Linwood said, is this something we want to add to our long-term goal? Continue to get those numbers. And I am going to start with member Onstead, please.
I don't have any further questions at this time, just a comment that I, I think that as our city grows, that we need to grow with it and that, like you said before, there are decisions that weren't made a long time ago. And if those, if they had made those tough choices back then, we wouldn't have to do it today, but I'm looking forward to improving our city in any way possible and make it very inviting.
Thank you, Mr. Onstead. So you're in favor of starting to kind of get some money, not money, but some overall, adding it to our long-term plan, correct?
Correct.
Found it that way. Okay, good. I just, all right, and member Yeager.
Sorry about that. Yeah, if you wish to get some numbers for a long-term plan, that's fine with me.
All right, thank you. Let's go, member Lucre.
Well, I think if we don't add it to the long-term plan, we're continuing to kick the can down the road. And I think by, by all estimates in terms of projected growth as well as just issues like, you know, like ADA was passed 20 years ago. We are way behind on this, even within that whole, like, if you, if you look out to like a six-year timeframe of adjusting facilities to make them ADA compliant, that still puts us like 14 years behind. So I think we can continue to talk about this and we can continue to look at plans, but if we don't ultimately make the step of adding it to a long-term plan, it's going to continue to be a conversation and that is absolutely no benefit to our, to our residents or our city staff.
Okay, thank you. Member Schilling.
Being that I missed most of this presentation due to a doctor's appointment, but either way, I'm all in favor of moving forward to looking at adding this to the CIP just because this is something that I campaigned on as well. And we do need to start planning for that long-term to accomplish what we need to get done. And I can't restate what everybody else said, but we are a growing community and we are trying to find ways to make us inviting and city services and facilities are one of those things that people do look at in some way, shape, or form as well. So I'm all in favor of moving forward with this.
Thank you. I think most know that I'm in favor of this as well. I have concerns not only about our growth as a city and residents do expect to have nice buildings and us to also be protectors of their tax dollars, right? But I have concerns as well for employees that we have working with us. And I worry about our fire department and the decontamination and not being able to have that and what happens to their families. That's a big concern of mine, and I don't have anybody that I, my family's that's on the fire department. I think all of us council members need to also worry about our employees. And then there's also the fact of the ADA compliant issue, and I've been saying that our city hall is, is public. And when we can't have somebody in a wheelchair or a walker or a senior get into our building without issues, then it doesn't become a public building, right? It, it just doesn't. So, and I've guided this council for the last four years to make sure that we're transparent and that we are looking ahead because I think we all agree, we don't want to leave this to anybody else down the road and have to deal with these difficult decisions because it'll be even more money. So with that, I think you know where I'm going on this. I believe that we need to look at this. I really, really appreciate the fact that you're not pushing that everything needs to be new, that you are giving this body a chance to look at a lot of different opportunities and where we can go with it. So high fives on that because I think we get concerned that you're going to say, no, everything has to be new, and you've really come up with some ideas for us to kind of look at and talk about. So really appreciate that. So with that, I think Mr. Schilling has a question.
Yeah, my apologies. Melissa or Rob, can I get a copy of this so I can just review it, what I've missed?
Send that to everyone, sure, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And it, member Schilling, it's also live on YouTube, so you'll be able to go back in real time too, so there is that, which is a real nice benefit, right?
Forgot about that.
Yeah, sometimes it's better that way. All right, so anyways, I think we're all in agreement that we need to add that to our long-term plan to start seeing some numbers down the road so we can be fiscally responsible and also be responsible to our residents in terms of buildings. So thank you for the presentation. You did a great job and just, we really appreciate it. All right, so with that, we are on item number two, which is the East Viking Boulevard Utility Project. And I'm just wondering if that means we're going to have Mr. Erickson kind of do the next presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We do have a brief PowerPoint this evening to go through. Again, the project that we're discussing here, item number two, is the sanitary sewer improvement project here planned for the spring of 2021. We felt it's really important to discuss with council the impactfulness of this project and really just, again, just identify what's involved with this project, what you can expect to see during construction and what efforts we're currently going through and coordinating and collaborating with MINDOT and also reaching out to our business owners and property owners to make sure that they're aware and they have adequate information to understand what's happening with this project. We can eliminate all the, all the issues or impactfulness of the project, but we certainly want to mitigate those. And I think where we've done quite a bit of work on that end with city staff and MINDOT staff and, and our own staff. And so with me this evening, I have Paul Hornby. He's a senior project manager at WSB, and he's really led a lot of the efforts related to this project and worked very closely with MINDOT. He's also working closely with Dan Pfeifer, our director of public engagement. And so we have some information that he's prepared this evening as well to go through with you. And so we just wanted to share that and make sure that you're aware. As far as schedule goes, and we're looking at likely bringing the plans and specifications and requesting authorization to advertise for bids at one of the two city council meetings in February and then awarding a contract likely at one of the meetings in March and then construction starting again early spring. So with that, I'll turn things over to Paul. He has some information he'll share on his screen. Rob, I'm not sure if you've given him authorization to share his screen yet, but he'll go through some information to share and I'll, I'll add as we go along as well.
He certainly should be able to.
All right, well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, members of, this is, this project is, in the onset, looks like a utility project, but actually got very complicated very quickly. There's a couple of projects that are going on in the corridor in 2021. Min, I'm going to mention, the big one is MINDOT is, has got a Mill and Overlay project and some rehabilitation work on Trunk Highway 61. That extends from Trunk Highway 8 on North and Forest Lake to I-35 through Wyoming. And with that said, they have set a date to which the city of Wyoming's project has to be completed within the Trunk Highway corridor by June 19th of 2021. So our schedule gets really pinched within the Trunk Highway corridor, so we're going to hope for early spring, no weather issues. The project is a upgrade of the trunk sanitary sewer system. It actually, the upstream end is up here on Fallbrook Avenue. I hope you can all see this on your screen. The sanitary sewer is shown in this lime green color. The sewer is being increased in size from 12 inch to 18 inches in diameter, and the shaded area you see here in the roadway is the limits of pavement we will need to go through in order to get the sewer system in. So we'll be quite heavily into the MINDOT right away and into their pavement. We'll have to restore that to MINDOT satisfaction, or what we're proposing is to put that pavement back to the existing street section that it is today. And MINDOT is supporting that, at least the design team on their Mill and Overlay. Part of the, I should review, one other item is that with MINDOT, we have a state aid project, the state aid portion of the project extends about this portion of roadway just east of Trunk Highway 61 through Fenwick Avenue. And we go through a state aid review with MINDOT on that, and that's to make sure that meets the requirements for state aid funding. The other part of the review is a trunk highway functional group. That is where we submit plans and it's divided up between all these different groups in MINDOT that may have an interest in the trunk highway system. That review takes quite a bit of time, and we do have comments back from that. Luckily, a lot of the, a lot of the members reviewed that plan, were familiar with it because we're working with MINDOT on the, through the preliminary design of this project and working with them on the project. So going back to the diagram, the light green is the sanitary sewer system. We'll connect upstream then to the existing 18-inch sewer, will extend 18-inch sewer through Forest Boulevard, connecting into an existing manhole down at Fenwick. That's the limits of the sanitary sewer work. Along with that, the things we'll have to also do is this darker green line is storm sewer that we'll have to remove or replace. The reason we're doing that is it's in conflict with excavation sanitary sewer. So we have to remove that back to a structure in the MINDOT right away and then reconnect the line within the trench. And that, we're doing that so we don't have to go all the way across the highway and remove more pavement, and also reduces cost to the city. So this is a, we also have a more extensive area sewer we have to remove and replace in this area. And the other thing we have to do is we have water main crossings to go through certain existing streets within the corridor, and this blue line represents water main that we'll have to remove and replace. It's cast iron water main, and with the depth of the sewer, especially as we get to about this point here through the end of the project, we're between 15 and 20 feet deep, we can't support the cast iron water main or that trench width. So we're going to have to remove it, put new water main back in and put it back in service. The area here that's in kind of the orange color, there are some signal loops, loop detectors that we'll have to remove and replace. MINDOT will require that we replace those up to the new standard, which isn't as big a deal as it may sound, but we have to remove the loops, rewire them back to the handles, the existing handles, which is their junction boxes that typically are in the sidewalk, and put new loops in in the aggregate base section. And there is a portion here, you see this kind of a grid pattern. This is an area where in coordination with MINDOT, we'll work on wherever gets in this area first to do removals, to do the removals of the pavement, the curb, sidewalk, and so forth. But MINDOT will be constructing this shaded area as new improvements. They're doing that because they have some ADA compliance items they're trying to meet with these two quadrants. And to do that, they're actually going to bump the curb out a little bit, about four feet on each side so that you can get compliant ADA ramps in here. So we're working with them, we'll be working very closely with MINDOT on this project. It kind of gives you an idea of the layout as far as what's involved. We will need to be, from about this area, we see this two plus zero zero, this engineering station through about this manhole right here that's shown where the cursor is. That work will need to be completed by June 19th of 21. So we staged the project so that contractor would actually come in and set this manhole first east of Highway 61 and then construct sanitary sewer up over here to Fallbrook and then complete Fallbrook and then step back and then do this work back here between Forest Boulevard and Fenwick Avenue. Not the most ideal way, we'd like to rather start back here at Fenwick and just go upstream in the sewer, make, make things less complicated, but. Make, make things less complicated, but, um, under the circumstances, we won't be able to do that. Well, the other item with the, um, traffic control is to provide detours where we can maintain access to local businesses. Uh, Paxton Avenue is a difficult one, but we have a plan that will provide access to them. Uh, throughout construction and, uh, got staged detour, so I'll go through that a little bit with, uh, a PowerPoint that. Dan Pfeifer has helped put together, um, we'll get to that next. Questions on the, the project overall? It's kind of a bridge I view of the project content.
And now Paul, maybe I'll just add one, uh, one or two just quick comments. So just the, the portion east of Forest Boulevard. Again, is an area that we talked about, uh, whether or not we move forth, uh, in a SASS project or not. But we really felt that since the project was so impactful to that corridor. Removing nearly all the pavement that we do a complete reconstruction of that segment of roadway with this project. And so we've, we've included that and does involve sidewalk removal. And so it is again, pretty impactful to that segment, but as Paul highlighted, that sanitary sewer going through, um, the east-west portion of sixty-one. And into the intersection there is, is, you know, in that fifteen to twenty foot deep range. And you can just imagine that, that's gonna be closed, right? That's our main artery, our main access to the interstate. And so with that being closed, um, whether it's emergency vehicles, businesses, residents. Um, just the normal traffic up and down, uh, highway sixty-one north-south. You know, particularly when they, when they close it just for the north-south traffic is gonna be pretty impactful as well. As we have a high volume of traffic that utilizes that roadway. That, that particular crossing is not gonna be closed, the duration of the project will get highway sixty-one back and open to traffic as soon as possible. But it will be not a day, right? It's gonna be, you know, I'm not sure, Paul, if you can comment on that, but we'll have some criteria that they need to have that road patched back. And get, um, traffic back moving forth, uh, you know, the north-south traffic, uh, as soon as possible. But again, it is, it is impactful and we're, we have a communications and public engagement, uh, component of this product that's been very. Um, very much involved and will continue to be, but again, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, uh, the, the impact of this project.
So I, just a quick question, cause I do worry about the businesses that are gonna be impacted, um. My quick count is two months? That we believe that it'll be some impact on our businesses, sixty days roughly. I'm not asking it for definite numbers, but roughly sixty days?
For the closing of, um, sixty-one here through the intersection, we're looking at. Three weeks, three and a half weeks to a month. Uh, that phase that would take us through that construction would be almost up to Paxton Avenue. Uh, we lengthen that stage and that also lengthens the time of construction, of course, uh, to try and reduce cost and also, um. Accommodate some other things like, uh, for instance, the existing, we're building this sewer over the existing sewer. So we have to bypass pump, uh, the wastewater around the construction zone. So trying to accommodate that with the detour staging and with the construction, but it's trying to give some flexibility of the contractor on how they may want to do things more effectively.
And, and Paul, Paul has a, uh, in the PowerPoint, he'll show the different stages of construction and how that's broken up. And we've done that and, and really what the detour routes are for each, uh, component of that. Um, and one, this one last comment before we move, I just wanted to highlight that downstream of this, meaning where this all flows to. A, a very large component of that upsizing has already been completed with our twenty fifteen improvement project. And then again, I think in two thousand and ten, um. Uh, upstream of this, uh, a project was also completed to improve and upsize this pipe. And so this is really a, a segment in between that wasn't necessarily, um. Correlated with any of our other roadway improvement projects. We've, we've made those other segments, uh, upside or upsize those other. Uh, segments of sewer at times in which we reconstructed the roadway. And so that's really why we're doing this, because MinDOT is improving this roadway. That it really precipitated us moving forward with this project at this time.
Okay, well, and my other concern too was just, uh, fishing traffic, uh, going up north traffic, that sort of thing, right? So, um, my hope, and this is probably jumping the gun and I'm just, by it's in my head, is, um, for staff. Can we make sure that, um, we do a really good job with indicating to residents? How they can support those businesses during the time that we're going through this? So, Mr. Lim, can we just put that in, probably Ms. Dumas as well? Just put this somewhere that we're gonna need to start working on some type of, um. Communication with our residents, how we support these businesses, um, during this time, especially our restaurants and hair salons and stuff.
That's, uh, that's something that, uh, Assistant City Administrator Dumas has been working on with Mr. Hornsby. Um, not only obviously to communicate to our residences and business how to get or how to utilize the detour. But also, and I think Mr. Hornsby will maybe show that even in his presentation that, um, to work with businesses to ensure that they have signage that says, yes, we're open. But we certainly will make a, a, a great push on our end too. We have a lot of different communication materials that they'll show. But to also make sure that we're really explaining to people that these businesses are open and here is how you access them if you want to go there.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Jaeger.
You're muted, councilmember.
Why are we building the sewer on top of the existing sewer? Are we going to be removing the stuff underneath or what?
We are removing the existing sewer and putting the larger diameter sewer in place.
Okay, but I just heard we were building it on top of. What we had.
Yeah, I should have spoke, I should have said that in a better manner. Um, we're replacing the existing sanitary sewer with a new sanitary sewer. So, uh, old sewer becoming out as the new sewer is coming, oh, is being constructed.
Okay, and it will be at the same depth?
Uh, the, the new sewer will be a little bit deeper. Uh, because it's a larger pipe, we're doing that to accommodate the existing sanitary sewer connections along the corridor. So that, um, we don't have to chase sanitary sewer services back beyond property lines to make them, to reconnect them.
Okay, I can.
And, uh, maybe to respond, or to, um, let the mayor and council know that. We did put a lot of thought into how we can, um, design detours to not only get traffic. Um, around the detour that may, uh, be going, maybe, may not be going directly into Wyoming, but, uh, maybe just passing through. Uh, but also providing local traffic, uh, areas so that, um, all the businesses can be, um. Directly accessed and one of the larger issues we did dealt with was the, the Paxton Avenue is a cul-de-sac. And we needed to keep that open one in, in some manner, but still get the sewer constructive. I think we found a very good way to do that. Um, there are two detours. There's a regional detour. The regional detour extends from trunk highway seven on the south side of Forest Lake. Uh, to Stacy. And it directs traffic on the interstate, um, that would typically bypass, um, the city of Wyoming. Uh, so that we can reduce the amount of traffic that's going through here. But then we also have staged local detours that allow traffic to access businesses. And for local traffic to get around in the local street system. You know, we, we do this, we encourage, um, bypass traffic to use the interstate. But there may be some occasion, we'll probably get some calls about it that, you know, people will find their way around the detour. We'll just have to monitor that and see if there are things that we can do to, um, reduce the impacts of that. Uh, one of the things I did wanna show, um, council is that we do have a, during construction, the, um. Sunrise Prairie Trail will be impacted because you can't let the trail cross over trunk highway sixty-one when we have an open trench. So during the first stage of the local detour. We do pick up the pedestrians on the west side of highway sixty-one at Wyoming Trail. And detour them along the trail on Wyoming Trail down across, um, Wyoming Trail to the north, on Fenwick. To the north side of East Viking Boulevard and back over to the trail. It seemed to be the, um, best way to do that, uh, with the shortest route to get them around the trench. So that, that detour has been proposed and, um, in our plan, so we want to make sure that. A connection was maintained. It's not ideal to run, to, to have them cross. Like in this area, there is a crosswalk, but it's not signaledized, but at least there's a, post, there is a crosswalk in this location. And traffic will be greatly reduced down in this area, so we'll be able to get people across East Viking Boulevard in this location. We'll leave the sidewalk in place along highway sixty-one until this phase is done and then that sidewalk. And then, uh, I think with that, there's a PowerPoint that we can, uh, go through that does, um. Give you an idea of what we've done to maintain access to businesses and, and shows you the project communication where we are today. What we're planning to do as the project comes forward. One thing I probably didn't mention when Mark and I were talking is that, uh, so I'm, I'm leading the design effort here in, in the office. Get the project out to bid. Uh, I don't just go away when construction starts, I'll be, uh, also leading the construction effort. Uh, for the city, be the main port, main person for contact, uh, for the project during construction. PowerPoint presentation. So, um, first thing that we're, uh, going to do for notification, uh, is have a postcard mailer. The postcard mailer will identify stages of construction, uh, the construction zone. Um, provides dates in which construction will occur, April twenty-first to late August the twenty-first is the entire project. Uh, this area to the west, this corridor here will have to be out of that quarter by June nineteenth. Um, so the first part of the portion, the first portion of the project will be in trunk highway sixty-one corridor. The, um, uh, the second portion of it will be more May to late October or. And we'll get this project finished before October and we're looking at late August or early part of September. To have that, uh, portion completed at the Fenwick. These will be finalized before they do go up to businesses. Um, the card will, um, provide a QR code for people who are, wanna scan it to get to the, uh, to the information on the project. We also will provide the location of the website for people to get more information. Uh, this information will be on signage on the, on the detour. And, um, we also will have a portable message sign that will be out to let people know seven days in advance of the closure. Those portable message signs will be placed so that people traveling highway sixty-one in the east-west direction and highway sixty-one in the north-south direction. Can see that, even though we signed it, we used the portable message signs because they, they have more impact, people will notice those. Um, this mailing of the postcard would occur through the area shaded here in pink. The main corridor which construction would occur. And we also have some handouts for the businesses. These are, these are downloadable, uh, and they can also be mailed. Um, I've got another slide where I showed the downloaded version, but, uh, what it does, it'll, it'll let, um. Businesses, the businesses have this on their website, uh, they can hand out, have handouts at the door. Uh, that, um, show areas, show how they can be accessed and provide the, um. The different local detours to get to their businesses. And it shows a different, the different, uh, local detours on the handout. And again, you may not, if you didn't see that on the first page, it's got my information on here as well. So, business owners can contact us, patrons can call us, residents can contact us. Work to correcting, she, correct issues as well. Um, so we'll also provide a business toolkit. This is the downloadable version that they can provide to patrons. Provides, uh, master distribution posting on their websites and in support of, um, the businesses. You know, we're also seeing, yeah, we're under construction, but my members still. We also do have, uh, some animation of the detours and this will be on the city's website. This is just gonna be one segment of it, but I'll play this for you so you can see what. So doing, during each stage, it'll show the area that's under construction and it'll show the, um, detour to get around it. And then the, the overall presentation also has a, um. Presentation that shows people where the primary detour is, uh, regional detour on I thirty-five. And there is also a voiceover that, uh. Um, explains what's going on with this animated, uh, video. So schedule and mailings, uh, we're looking at the postcard mailing in January and providing the business handout mailer. That's, uh, going to be targeted to the businesses and we will be, um, providing toolkit to them, making it available to them. The, um, business owners will also be invited for virtual meetings to discuss the project and access concerns that they, they may have. And then we'll work with the city to try to, uh, minimize, um, barriers that they see or suggestions that they bring. Animated detour map should help and, um, I think people will, if we can direct people to the website. Secondary postcard to be mailed twenty-one days prior to the construction anticipated start, uh, in March or April. First, we're showing a little bit of a wider area of when that might go out, um, you know, this could be heavily weather dependent. Um, but we're looking at, you know, early spring, as early as we can. And then, uh, as I said, during construction, I'll be the main point of contact for the project, I'll be working with our staff here with city staff to, um. Try to address anything that may arise. With that, if anyone has any questions, or Mark, do you have any other items you might, might wanna add?
No, I think, um, I think that covers it. I think it was, you know, really wanted to just convey what's happening with the project and what efforts are underway. And if there's any feedback, we certainly want to hear that from you. I think there's, you know, the other component here is while this is under construction, MinDOT will also be under construction. Um, coming from the south, um, starting around the same timeline. And so there's certainly going to be a lot happening, um, here. And so, um, if you do have any concerns or questions, certainly share those with us and we can try to incorporate. I think we've heard some good feedback, uh, here this evening already, but we'll continue to take that feedback and, uh, do what we can to minimize the. Uh, concerns or impacts to residents, businesses and the traveling public.
Alright, thank you. I do wanna ask staff, do we know anything about the MS one fifty for June? Have they stated whether they're virtual or live?
Right now, that's up in the air. They're still going through their planning process, but we have been working with all the potential. Uh, that was something we've done along with MinDOT to go through all the potential, um, whether it's MS one fifty. We had the Regnar, we would have the Regnar run in August, um, you know, our stagecoach celebration. We have, uh, tried to cover those and had been, have been in contact with all those different, um, individuals from those groups, letting them know about the. The detour. So I, I know MS one fifty is still up in the air as far as what they are gonna be doing. But I know Mr. Hornsby's been, um, talking with county people in regards to the detour on the Sunrise Prairie Trail and MinDOT as well.
Okay, and then, um, are we gonna need to worry about any local weight restrictions, um, during those detours? And, and the reason I ask is you've got Premier that has trucks coming in all the time. Um, Polaris, I'm not sure which way you're gonna detour Polaris trucks. Um, but I just wanna make sure weight restrictions, if there are any, um, how we deal with that. Especially with some of our, um, industrial park people.
Yeah, we, we will be working with businesses directly to get them, to make them aware of, um, what roadways that we want them to take. Uh, we also will need to, uh, and Rob, maybe while we're on this tube of talking to Polaris, I'm with stretch and they can come into their site, which is referred.
Yeah, and, and I think we'll, we'll work with those businesses. I know that, um, Assistant City Administrator Dumas has been working with Paul to, to set up meetings with businesses. And we'll probably have some of those virtually and, um, to let them know in regards to, you know, our industrial routes, whether it's two sixtieth and then going back through Fallbrook. Um, and they're just continuing using East Viking Boulevard and some of those other detour roads that are between East Viking and Wyoming Trail. That that's not necessarily suitable and weight instructions would be enforced and, uh, to really stay on those main routes. And weight instructions would be enforced and to really stay on those main routes to ensure areas that we won't be replacing streets, that we don't have to replace them any sooner than, than usual.
The upside might be, maybe we'll, maybe we'll find a new way for the trucks to get to Polaris. Might be the upside out of all of this, who knows, right? I see Mr. Linwood going, really?
Yeah, I know, that's a good thing, maybe.
Right, you never know, so awesome, okay. And then my other thing is, and I'm just putting this out there, maybe the EDA can kind of help with these businesses and getting the word out with them as well. So just might be a good chance to touch with them and, and help, you know, just help getting signage up and that sort of thing. So, but otherwise, I think it's a great presentation, we are in for a long haul with construction, that's for sure.
And Mr. Linwood did, made a comment about, you know, cut through traffic really from East Viking to Wyoming Trail, right? And so we know that Forley will be reconstructed this next year. And I'm referring specifically to residential traffic, the local detour. We do expect that there's going to be cut through traffic, there's, there's a need really to get south on 61. And without the ability with East Viking to be under construction, with, with East Viking being under construction, there's going to be some cut through traffic on some of the local roads. And I think our preference would be that we would identify those to travel down Forley since it's going to be reconstructed this year, right? So our project will immediately follow this project. We won't have this project that we have planned for our normal street reconstruction project that we have planned for in 2021. That will not occur at the same time. We really can't have all of that going on at the same time. We'll likely follow that project and have more of a, probably an August construction start for our reconstruction project that we've had a neighborhood meeting for thus far. So some of that local traffic that we have from the neighborhoods to the north are going to need to get to the south. And so our, I guess our preference, and I'd like to hear council's feedback, you know, there are a couple of cut-throughs that we have. And I think people will utilize whichever they, they, they feel more convenient is the way it usually works. But we would propose, and we are proposing that, that, that detour on Forley since we will be reconstructing that to, to limit damage to roads that we aren't doing any work on.
All right, council, go ahead and unmute if you have any questions or comments about what Mr. Erickson was asking.
I have a quick question just regarding communication. I think in, in past, when we've done projects involving public works that have impacted traffic. I think staff has done a really nice job of, of reaching out to the school district to make sure that they're, they're aware. And I, I would anticipate whatever state school is in, in-person, distance, what have you, this will impact bus routes. And so I'm just wondering if transportation has been given a heads up.
Sorry, I was muted. We, we have not, we have talked about that, they are on our list of contacts, and so they certainly will be informed of that. We, we always do that, but there's also, the hospital is another big one, right? With the emergency personnel that they have. And so we're, we're working with our Public Safety Director, Mr. Hoppy, and working on those communication plans as well. And so there's a, a large effort for reaching out to all those agencies here in the very near future.
All right, anyone else from council have any questions or comments? Doesn't look like it, all right, we really appreciate the time that you've taken to update us and it's a lot of work. I know we're sitting here going, oh my gosh, I'm sure you guys are really thinking that as well, so appreciate that and your time, so. We will move on to number three on our agenda, which is the Highway 8 design discussion. I do, I'm just trying to, hold on a second here, get back here. One of the things I do want to make sure that we know, as we go through this, I know that the EDA and the Planning Commission have had discussions on this, so when the time is right, we can go ahead and I know that Brett and I were both on Planning Commission. Dennis and I were both on EDA, and Rob was EDA as well, and Fred, if he's still on, was planning commission. So, so we'll be able to kind of give you some feedback on to what those commissions had to say. All right, who's ever going to be next?
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is Mark Erickson. Again, I wanted to quick, just give an overview, and I'm going to share my screen now. Is everybody able to see that? I think I might be sharing the wrong screen here, bear with me. All right, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, the overall project that Joe Triplet and Shisago County have really spearheaded in, in an effort to improve this Highway 8 corridor is shown here, really starting in Washington County. The, the segment you can see here, this is the, the border between Shisago County and Washington County. And I just highlight here, I'm going to zoom in, but I just want to quick cover the overall corridor again, really from, from the border. The border here with, with Forest Lake. And I'm going to move to a next slide really here, that really, again, covers that entire corridor all the way to the border with Shisago City here at Iris. And so it's a pretty significant level of improvements that they're identifying. You can see the yellow is the main trunk highway improvements. And then the, the purple, if you will, is really the, the network of, of roadways that they're proposing to construct or pave, that they, some of these are existing, but really to limit the access. You can see that there is a tremendous amount of access on the roadway. And I'll zoom in and just maybe kind of scroll through this here, just, just real quickly. And then highlight some of the questions and, and things that Mr. Triplet is looking for with regards to feedback. I'm going to zoom in here. And one that I really want to focus on here at the onset is the intersection at Greenway. And you can see there's access points here for the building, the commercial business here that were proposed to be really, looks like eliminated and provided access here that provides a little bit more spacing and a better operation of the intersection itself. When we get, this is the end, the edge of this, this, this role plot. And so I'll, I'll share with you where this goes, but they're providing access to existing business that currently is at this location right adjacent to the intersection, and that is problematic. And so I think they've done a nice job of showing the separation from the highway. And so I think we're supportive of that. This here, this access really is to a property that I'll share with you on the next slide. And so I just want to quick highlight what they're proposing. Again, this is what the county has developed and proposed. They have since gotten feedback at, from the federal government. And so they've provided some comments that I think the county is not necessarily in favor of, and it's regarding some of the intersection controls. And so I shared with you, and Mr. Triplet shared with you at the last city council meeting, some information relating to those intersections. So those are different from what you see here now, and I'll quick highlight those momentarily. So again, this is back to where that, that segment that I just showed you there on Greenway really providing access to this large developable parcel. And I'll zoom in here again, so that's a little bit easier for everybody to see. So again, really providing access to this area. And what they've, what they've identified, again, for service is really from this Hamlet Avenue intersection. All of the driveway accesses that you see here are proposed to be eliminated. And you can see there's a service road identified to provide access to these existing homes and ultimately connect out at Greenway Avenue. You can see the, the proposed intersection here is a full intersection, it's uncontrolled. They're not identifying signals based on the current volume of traffic that could potentially change depending on use and development in this area long-term into the future. But again, the county has identified the intersection control here as shown. Again, really providing these roadways that don't exist now to provide future access that is, or to provide access that has been eliminated from direct access to County Road 8. Similarly, at Hale, Hazel, these have all been eliminated along with some of the, I think this is the nursery here. Maybe not, this is the, the, I guess it's a boat repair. Canvas repair place. Drawn blank on the name of the business, but we've looked at, they've really looked at eliminating all accesses really but three. So we have the Greenway, we have the Hamlet, as we continue east, these accesses have been eliminated, really all driveway access, all business access, all roadway accesses except for, again, the Hamlet, the Greenway, and then the Heath Avenue. And you can see Heath actually exists in a skew right here, which is problematic for sightlines, and they really want to look to improve that as well. And so they've really eliminated that skewed intersection and relocated it entirely to provide a perpendicular intersection. This is own, I believe, mixed use, if I'm not mistaken. And so it does bisect this existing parcel, it doesn't happen to go down a property line or where an existing roadway is. But it would provide a way to subdivide that property and develop it on either side potentially. And so again, I just wanted to show high level what the county has proposed. We received a lot of information here Tuesday, just yesterday, from the county's consultant that's worked through this process. And they're looking for feedback here at the end of the month. And so in order for us to do that, it's really helpful to see the actual documents that they have prepared, the actual traffic volumes so that we can see how the intersections operate. And that will really help formulate a lot of our opinion on, on the plan here. And so, like I said, we've just received that yesterday, we'll be working to provide comments back to the county by the end of the month for their request. But again, we needed that information really to formulate our opinion on, on, on the plan. Again, a little bit more detail on some of the, the proposed accesses here. Again, a lot of the access for 250th Street no longer comes out to Highway 8, but it would be rerouted to West Comfort and then ultimately to Heath. And so there's, there's ways that we're really limiting access out to Highway 8. And so maybe I'll just start with that, and then we can move on to what really, what really some of those intersections are looking to be rather than what they're showing here as a, as a full access intersection to more of the R-Cut intersections that we discussed very briefly at the last city council meeting. So I'll, I'll start, is there any, any concerns or any questions as to what is happening here? And is there any, any feedback that the council has? I know it's very difficult with the short amount of time that you've seen this, and I'd be happy to share this with Mr. Linwood. And he can share that with council members. And if you do have feedback that you don't, can't necessarily think of this evening, we'd be certainly interested in hearing that at a, at a future date prior to the end of the month.
Mark, so the feedback we give, in all honesty, we know how big the Mindot entity is. Let's say all of us are in agreement, we don't want, what is it, the, the curve going around the accident reduction or?
Yeah, the reduced conflict intersection.
Yeah, because that's kind of a lot of us are saying that, but is Mindot really going to listen to that? And, and not to offend Mindot if they have to be watching this, but you know, um, you know, I, I just get a little concerned that we put this in. And then how much are they going to listen to, to that feedback and what were the concerns that we have?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think that's a fair question. They have their desires for their, for their facility here, and I think that's, that's important. And that's, that's, that's a fair question. I think Mr. Triplet is been an extremely great advocate for the city of Wyoming, city of Shisago. I think they're really pushing for limitations to environmental impacts as well. And so those do take up a little bit more space, I think he's commented on that as well. And so I think there's, there's a fair argument that I think we can share. And I think if we have strong feelings, I think we're, I think it's important for us to do that. I don't know how successful we'll be, but I think it's certainly worth, worth the commentary and providing that, those comments.
And are we, do you think it's beneficial then as well to let our elected officials know where we stand on what we think are good or bad or whatever? Is that something that as council, and then also as mayor is obviously of Shisago County, to be able that, that this affects Highway 8, that we're able to come together with a letter just really stating that this is what we agree on or what we want or don't want? Does, do you feel that that would be beneficial as well?
I do think, I think Mr. Triplet has commented before, I think that the fact that, I think he'd be interested in any items like you've just discussed, I think those are all helpful. I think he'd be willing to take a meeting and discuss those type of things. I know he's commented on that to Mr. Linwood and I, that he'd be happy to sit down and discuss any avenues, whether it's any help that we have or any discussions we can have with key individuals regarding funding, regarding the intersections that we're discussing today. I think those all things are all things that would certainly help and I think are, are welcomed by Mr. Triplet.
Okay, I'll make sure I get ahold of the mayors at this effect as well. And we can have conversations when, once councils have been able to weigh in on it, so. All right, and then maybe Mr. Linwood, you could kind of help with that too? Okay, perfect, thank you.
So if it's okay, I just, it's a, it's a, about a two and a half minute video that just kind of understands reduced conflict intersections just so everybody can see and understand how they operate. I think that was a question that had come up at the last city council meeting, and I'll share that here. Can you hear the audio as well?
Not yet.
If that audio is not coming through, I can hear it on my end, but I can certainly share this link, and we can just watch a couple moments of it here if you'd like.
I think you'll need to share the link.
I'll, I'll do that, I'll share that link, and it, it's, it's pretty informative. I'll just share that link with, with Mr. Linwood, he can send that out to the entire council. All right, and so this is the, the intersection design that we've talked about with that reduced conflict intersection. So what that video and audio will show you is really a description of how those intersections function. And I'll just quickly, if you can follow my mouse, if you're wanting to go, if you're, if you're heading this direction on Hamlet and you want to go this direction, east on 8, what you would have to do at this intersection, you'd come here and you'd exit west, or I'm sorry, exit west, yes. And then make this U-turn, if you will, and head back in this direction, whether it's to go across the roadway, you'd have to make that same movement around, and the, the thought is that you're not crossing ultimately multiple lanes of traffic in this direction a median, and, and then also trying to manage traffic coming from this direction. So you're really reducing the points of conflict, and that, it's very, I guess it's described quite well in the, in that video that I'll, I'll share with Mr. Linwood. But there, you can see there's widening points that we end up having, and you can see the, the location of homes with people doing U-turns right in front of their homes. I think those are somewhat problematic, I know there's some environmental areas that we're trying to not have these impacts within. And you can see, I think he has those here as well, again, with that intersection as well. So we, they're, they're proposing, I think the, the request is to change those to reduce conflict intersections. And I think I'll leave it at that, I'll just share that video with Mr. Linwood. I'll share with him the attachments that I've shown you here this evening. And if there's anything that you have that you feel very strongly about and would like to provide comment, just share that with Mr. Linwood or myself. And we can certainly add that to our comments that we provide the county here at the end of the month. So with that, I guess, I don't know, Mr. Linwood, if you had any additional information you wanted to share with the council this evening?
I think maybe the only thing, just to share, and Mr. Weck, I know that you had sent something out to Mr. Triplet today about the planning commission's input. Really, the EDA, we, we did share with the EDA too, obviously, that the development component of this road is something that I thought was important to get in front of them. And both the corridor designs that they, that they recommended were Recommended were design A and G. And both A and G, the significance where there was not any of the. Reduced conflict intersections. They were not proponent of those at all and thought that they were. If anything, in their mind, more dangerous than, and if, if safety was a concern on the road, that they were not in favor of that. So. Both that corridor, A and G. Fred, I don't know if you have anything to add in regards to the planning commission?
The planning commission doesn't like those intersections either. So. That was their biggest comment also, not liking those intersections. Having experienced the one at Highway 65 and County Road 23 over. In East Bethel, they're, they're not in favor of it all. So. They had some other minor comments, but that was, I think the biggest outcome from, from the discussion.
Well, Linda has a question. Did the EDA discuss the economic impact of everybody whizzing through Forest, whizzing through Wyoming on a four lane highway? How that's going to affect our, the businesses at. Greenway and access to the businesses on Greenway? And did the planning commission have any thoughts on how this will affect development?
The EDA standpoint, no. I think if anything, you're gaining more access in regards to, and opening up for more business. You still have. The existing access to those businesses along Greenway Avenue. So, and I think the EDA looked at some of the. The actual new components that go behind, especially for example, the slide that Mr. Erickson has up now that. Could provide access to some more development, especially the, the street there that you see to the. To the south, to potentially have new businesses to good parcels of land. So they did not have any other, any comments on it though.
Okay. That's going down. Towards Forest Lake in the purple?
Nope, that would be going towards Shisago City.
Okay.
It would be the beginning intersection there right at Greenway and Eight. So you'd have the, that would be the. The carpet, the liquor store, the gas station, and then the Mike's Bait right there where Mr. Erickson is pointing.
I'm on the other side. I'm thinking of it on the other side.
Oh, okay. And then across the daycare and the mattress and then the Super America there where Mr. Erickson is now.
Okay. But you're thinking the purple will go into the property behind. Was that an engineering fee, a firm over there?
The Woodseth Building and then a, a car sale area. That would, that's what the county is presenting us at this point in time. And I think, I know you would ask council member in regards to the costs. And right now it is their idea that they will receive funding to do all the initial. All these initial roads along with it that won't be at the city's cost.
Okay. But the idea is along the purple, you would open up that empty land for development.
Correct.
Okay. Now, how far is this from the houses that are back here? There's that cut out on the diagram. So I can't really see the houses.
There's.
Isn't there a road that comes down and? Down there.
Yep, right. That's, that's correct.
Oh, that's over here. That's, that's this little thing over here.
That would be a house right there. Greenway Lane.
Yeah, okay. So the purple comes in before you get to Greenway Lane.
Correct, correct.
Right.
Okay.
Is that all your questions, Linda?
Well, that was the other one with the plant, what does this planning commission look at for development?
The planning commission also did look at those, some of those things. And also like Mr. Linwood stated, the new roads actually make it easier for those lands to develop. They're putting in roads that the developer would have to actually do with himself if, if the state and the federal government wasn't doing it. So, so if anything, it's, it's a benefit to the city for future development. To have any of those accesses come in.
Okay. I said, I was just more concerned that people would just be whizzing by Wyoming.
And, and I think that's, you know, I, I think as far as feedback, council member Jaeger, I think is, you remember Mr. Triplet kind of said, you know, what is the? What is the, what would the council like to see? Is it a, is it a Highway 96? Is it a 169? I think he said this design, Mr. Erickson, is a 50 mile per hour design. You know, I think that's an important feedback component of what you really think, that two lane highway. You know, with that, that 50 mile an hour speed, but what, what you want it to feel like. I think that's something, an input component he is asking for.
Well, that's my, that's my input. I just, I would like to stop him and I would like to encourage people to stop in Wyoming.
All right. Any other questions from council? Shake your head yes, no, or unmute? Yep, no's a no's and looks like all no's. It is eight o'clock. So we've been on Zoom for two hours and four minutes. And then for the rest of staff who's probably been on meetings all day long, right? So. All right. Um, do we have everything that we need then? It looks like all the, we have three things on the agenda. It looks like. There are no further questions or comments from my, from the looks of it. And if that is the case, does staff have everything that they need from council? Yes. All right. Good. All right.
One minute, Madam Mayor. I did have one question that I forgot to ask when we were doing the wall presentation. When we put everything on the long-term plan, how much are the, is option D going to cost?
That's why we're going to do the long-term plan. Why I asked for direction from the council. I, I don't, I don't have any ability to answer that at the moment.
Okay. Because you have to have some kind of idea of how much it's going to cost. So you can put it into the long-term plan.
Right. I don't have those, all those figures, some mold yet. And I think we need direction from the council. What options, we'll, we'll present those options along with what the council sees fit as far as whether we're looking at. You know, renovations of facilities, if we're looking at new existing facilities. So we'll work to compile those numbers.
Okay.
All right. So if I'm correct, we have nothing else. And so I am going to adjourn our meeting at 8:05. So everybody have a good night and a good rest of your week.